So this is a special meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee for November 23rd, 8:00 PM. Called a order. Tonight's agenda is compressed. We are going to go into an executive session for about twenty, thirty minutes and then we're going to come back into executive, into the open meeting and continue the rest of the meeting. So if everybody's set, I'm gonna have to ask folks that are visitors to step out of their room.
I'm sorry.
And we will, as soon as we do a roll call. So do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion and sharing strategy for superintendent's contract.
Okay. And a second?
My second motion.
And a roll call. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Lauren, yes. Nicole, aye?
Yes.
Kathy. Mark?
Yes.
I mean Neil and Lynn.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I must make that motion. Thank you all. We are going to resume the public session. That's not me. We are going to resume the public session of the meeting now. I'm gonna play with the agenda order a little bit, but before we do that, Michael has a statement that he would like to make.
Oh, okay. So I'm announcing that I will be separating from the district effective at the end of business on November 30th, 2015. I wish to extend my appreciation to the school committee for collaborating with me to get to an agreement that's been mutually acceptable to both parties. As I said in my original letter, leaders have to always be looking back to make sure there are people following, and I'm grateful to those that have supported me in the work that I've done over these past twelve years. With the signing of this agreement, joint agreement, it's time for all of us to stay positive and put our words and deeds towards supporting our, the school committee, our new leader, the district, and our kids. As a member of this community, I fully expect, as a parent and resident, I will continue to have a lot invested in the success of our school district. I would never want anything or anyone to tarnish the good name of Neshoba. I will continue to support the good work of the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have also prepared a statement to share that Michael clearly has been involved with. In early October, the school committee began the process of reviewing the superintendent's employment contract, which is set to expire at the end of the school year. The superintendent met with the personnel subcommittee. Following that, the personnel subcommittee and the full school committee had several discussions regarding the superintendent's contract, his goals, the committee's goals, and the needs of the district over the next several years. During the course of these discussions, it became apparent to both the committee and the superintendent that it was the right time for a change. We appreciate Mr. Wood's positive contributions to the district over his past twelve years of service, and we sincerely wish him well in the future. We look forward to beginning the process of finding the district's next superintendent and pledge to undertake this weighty task with the goal of moving the district forward and providing the students of the Neshoba Regional School District with the best possible educational experience. And I know we've said it before, but we sincerely appreciate all of your service. Okay, so as Michael stated, there is an agreement. And he already signed it.
I have.
So we need a motion on signing, accepting the separation agreement.
I move that we accept the separation agreement as of November 23rd, 2015, for superintendent Michael Wood.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Six. All those opposed? And all those abstaining? One. Kathy.
This is going for the best.
That was you. Yeah.
All right. Okay. I did put citizens' comments on the agenda tonight, and I'm sure that there are some of you who would like to speak. We allotted five minutes, which is what our typical time is. I can go over that a little bit, but certainly not as much as we went over on Wednesday. So is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Anne?
Just vocal, what will the leadership be after November 30th?
So we'll talk about that when we get there, but on the agenda, Anne, we've got a, as soon as the citizens' comments are done, I'll talk about that, if that's okay. Thank you. Again, does anyone have any comments that they'd like to make? No. Okay. All right. Let's move into superintendent search process. So Kathy, Codyanne, Lynn, and I are on personnel, and Kathy's been doing a lot of work. First thing I want to mention is, we have an assistant superintendent in the district. And the reason we have an assistant superintendent in the district is to be able to step in when the superintendent isn't available. So Nicole, Michael, George, and I are going to meet soon so that we can start to talk about asking George to act as our executive superintendent while we look for an interim and a permanent at the same time. And that's something that I'll come back to you guys with on the second, but we will, I know that Michael, you're in favor of that, and George seems up for it. We're just gonna figure out how we get all that stuff you're doing done, but, so we'll work on that, but that's what's gonna happen for the short term. Okay. I think we could probably, do you wanna, Kathy, you wanna talk about the search process and where it stands?
Sure. If you just have sense of them. Lauren spoke to this at the last school committee meeting, and this is just a general overview of what the search process entails. And you can see in general, it includes development of a leadership profile, recruiting candidates, screening candidates, and then evaluating the finalists. And although it is the school committee's responsibility to hire the superintendent, the process involves members of extensive or broad representation of members of the school committee and the community at large. So most districts undertake to find an organization, a company to help them with their search. And so I have two proposals that the committee can look at, to consider. I also looked into a couple of private organizations that do executive searches. One is Hazard Young, Atia, and Associates. And they're based in Chicago, but they do a lot of searches all over the country. And then there is another company that's set there for Shore, McPherson, and Jacobson. Again, an executive, I mean, if you wanna look at these, that's fine. But in looking at them, and just from experience, knowing that most districts tend to go with the companies that are right here in our backyard, Nesdeck and MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And Nesdeck stands for the New England School Development Council. So let me pass these out. So these proposals outline the scope of services, and they also give a, their budget. And MASC is the least expensive of the two, they come in around eleven thousand dollars, and Nesdeck comes in at around sixteen. But I think what I would like everybody to do, I don't wanna sit here and read all this stuff to you, if people could look it over, we have a personnel subcommittee meeting on Monday, November 30th. You can send comments or if you'd like to attend, we meet from 5:30 to 6:30 right here.
And everyone's?
Oh, it's a public meeting. But the rest of the committee could come if you wanted to offer anything, because we'll be looking at it and coming to the committee on December 2nd with a recommendation, but I would certainly value your point of view on this. Because of Michael leaving at the end of the month, there's gonna come a point where we need to talk about an interim superintendent. And the school committee selects the interim superintendent, and so I will be in touch with MASC, who provides our school districts with lists of retired superintendents who do this type of interim work. And so I will get the list and I'll begin the vetting process with your permission, and then we'll be discussing that on the personnel on the 30th and probably on the 2nd. And the interviews of the interims will be public, open to the public, although it will be the school committee that is engaging in the questioning. So does anybody have any questions at this point?
So next steps are, you want us to review the material?
I would like it if people would review the materials, and if you have any questions, that you can just email me the questions with a do not reply, and I will, I already have a couple of questions I'll be asking these different companies about, based on the conversations we had at personnel before this meeting. But if you have any questions that you want me to ask, just send me an email again with a do not reply, and I will be happy to do that. So I'll be working on that this week, so.
And then are you going to parallel path the, or parallel track the permanent search?
With?
Oh, this is the permanent. You're talking about interim.
This is the permanent search. The interim, I'm gonna, I'll get in touch with MASC tomorrow and see what information that they can give me, and then I can begin to do some vetting of that, if that's okay with everybody.
Okay. So I got a request from the Fort Sawyer School Council.
Yep.
Two members and the principal. And they asked about having myself and any other school committee member come to their December 9th meeting and to share a lot of information. And I think that that information probably, their reference, I believe, was around the permanent.
Yep.
Search.
Yep.
And I'm wondering if it makes sense for us to conduct a broader meeting for all of the school councils and anyone from the community, school community, residents, et cetera, to come, once we get to point where, and we've gotta get there soon.
Yes. The scope of services that each of these companies provides allows for that, and they come in and facilitate it. They have all the information, and we're learning as we go along as well. And so I know that they will speak to a big group, but they'll go to individual schools and create focus groups and talk with people, and they have, they do something that they, they collect, they survey, and they have focus groups, and they develop a profile of what we're looking for. So there's a process. But I think that as soon as we decide which company we wanna use, then we need to turn it around to get a timeline.
Right. And will, will you plan to have them come in and pitch us, talk to us, or is this how it typically works, is that you review the materials?
We can have that, if you'd like. What I would ask is that you folks look it over, read it, if you want them to come in and pitch it. I'm sure they will.
And give us a chance to ask questions.
Yes. Yep. So, but look it over first. If one is clearly, seems to have a better product, I mean, again, in my experience, I've worked with both companies, and they do a good job. So, but whatever your pleasure is, if you want them to come in and pitch, I'll get somebody in here. It would make sense that if we were going to do that, we would do it the second meeting in December, so we need to make a decision pretty quick, because I'd like to have a timeline that starts in January.
Right. Okay.
Any questions, you guys?
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I do. As far as reporting out to, whether it's school councils, the district community, et cetera, are you saying we're waiting till the second week of December to make those decisions and then report out later? Because I think we need to at least explain the process for the sake of, again, transparency and understanding so that where it goes.
Right. And what I, both of these organizations, part of their package, if you will, is that they outline the process and take us through it step by step. And they will do it for the committee, and they will do it for the individual schools. They'll have a community meeting. So that's included in their scope of services, that type of.
Correct. That just seems to get further down the line.
Not necessarily. It depends on when, as soon as we decide who we wanna use. I mentioned December 16th because that seems like the most, our next meeting is December 2nd, which is next week. And then two weeks later is our next meeting. If we decide that we want somebody from each company to come in and make a presentation, that's what I'm looking at the 16th, the school committee meeting on the 16th for. If you look at this and say, well, let's go with whomever, then we just have that one person come in. So it depends upon whether or not the committee wants to hear from both a representative from each company, or it's pretty to say a cut. But I'd like your opinion, your input, and if you can come to the meeting next week, that's great. If you can't, just send questions or comments, and that would be great, too. Okay?
Okay.
So we might have a decision by next week, and then we can get off the done. Yes, Nicole?
I just think a lot of the questions that are coming up are process, you know, process questions. And the more that we can share upfront with the, particularly the school councils.
Sure.
If we could, like, send out an invitation to the school councils to-
Send a representative to the personnel meeting, you know, inform them that, you know, the meeting's coming up on the 30th, and, you know, obviously, you can't make it mandatory, but just to have every one of the schools represented as best as possible to then dispense their information to, you know, I know there's not gonna be any decisions made or anything, but, you know, someone saying, well, who can explain the first step of the process to the rest of their school council?
Right. But I'm not qualified to explain it on Monday.
I figured, yeah.
I'm not saying, I'm saying, well, this is the first step of the process, though, that we are, that we're going through.
The first step is that we hire.
Is that we hire, so, yes.
Yes, and then they do exactly what you're saying.
So, but we just have to tell the council what, what the first step is.
Sure.
That's all.
You look like you wanna say something.
Nope.
Okay.
I'm sure. Yeah, well, I would just go, a meeting on the 30th, personnel?
Yes.
At 5:30?
What time do you want?
Yes.
Well, I don't, I was just gonna send out an email to the principals.
I thought.
Is that what that is?
Do, wait, before we do that, do you want that, or would you prefer to get a?
It's a public meeting, and you can come.
Okay. All right. But are you gonna be prepared for participation?
I can be. It depends. If I don't know something, I'll say, I don't know.
All right. That'd be great. Thank you.
No problem. We'll be the first time. So that's sort of the broad overview and the broad process, and if folks have questions. And I will be putting these materials on the, can I send them to you? Who can I send these to to be on the district website as meeting materials for?
Send to Leah.
But she's gone, right, for the rest of the meeting?
No, she'll be back tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, I'll send them to her so that if folks, the public wants to look at them, they'll be there.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So what's the process for meeting with school councils? Like, we're going to, do we have to get a general consensus from the group here, say we're going to meet with them, or just meet with them?
I think we should, because we got one request, I think we should invite them to come and meet with us, but if we do that, then we need to make sure that the school community is invited as well. It's gonna be a public meeting, so we may be looking at a broader, bigger venue. And then-
Wait, for Monday?
No, 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 not for Monday. Are you talking about personnel? Did you mean a general meeting?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What is this?
This is timeout, so that I can say that part of the reason you hire somebody is for them to do the heavy lifting and organize and tell you about venues and stuff like that.
We need to present to our-
Oh, yeah.
-community what we are gonna do before this, this thing starts rolling down the hill.
Right. Don't we need to know what we're gonna do?
Yeah. But I think we, we need to go to our schools and share with them, here's where we're at, this is what we're gonna do, right? And then when these people come in, they can do the actual walking in and then building the structure.
So I guess what I need to understand, and we don't have to do this now, we can do it in personnel, is what that looks like and what the expectations are exactly.
Yeah. I think, I think we're gonna have to, in personnel, we're gonna have to sit down and figure out our timeline, right? Let's, let's talk about it on Monday.
You're talking about the process versus informing people of the process?
Exactly. I'm talking about the process.
You're talking about informing people of the process versus you're talking about in the process and then letting that go around.
And I guess my point is that the representative of the group, the company that we choose is better informed to outline the process for people, clearly and specifically, in detail.
What dates do you wanna tell people what?
We don't know. Well, let's talk, I think we should talk about it on Monday.
The only, the only date you have right now is personnel. And Michael's gonna put out emails to the councils and invite them to personnel on Monday. That's all we've agreed to, so.
That's right.
Okay.
And then we're gonna talk more on Monday in personnel, because I think at this point we don't have enough information to move even into what are we sending and what are we telling them. We just don't have it yet. We just started. Okay? So Monday, the 30th?
Monday, the 30th.
At 5:30?
5:30.
Personnel, here.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all you can do at this point, until we-
Is it the whole agenda?
All right.
That's one, it's a one agenda item. One, one item agenda.
Okay. And then the other, are we all set? Kathy, Mark, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Nicole, you're good. And then the only other item on the agenda for tonight is an update on the SRO equipment needs and the cameras at the high school. It seemed to come up quickly and urgently on Wednesday, so I'm going to turn it over to you, and we have guests here as well.
So Bill Clary prepared this email, or, and I just put it on the letter, just so the school committee can have it, specific to the cameras, and I'll talk a little bit about the radios, although chief, interim chief Nelson's here, and he's well aware of what we've researched thus far, and there hasn't been any change as of yet. So essentially, we, we had cameras beginning about seven years ago, and we've consistently upgraded them as time allowed, as well as added some. This goes into some details that I don't have full technical awareness of, but, you know, essentially, as they have improved in quality and ability, we have bought those types of cameras. We did just replace the server, and that has added to the quality as well, to be able to move into digital cameras for the availability around, around the, all of our schools. This is specific to the, to the high schools. So we do still have analog, and we're adding the digital cameras as we go along. We have, I don't wanna give specifics for security reasons, but we have multiple cameras inside and outside, and we're adding to that as well. We are only aware of two that are not functioning, and both are in the queue to be fixed. And, you know, they are, they're not something where, you know, cameras will always be helpful to solve problems, but we won't always have a camera in the right place at the right time necessarily. So I, and, you know, based on the number of staff we have, it's still best to have staff who can see and have their ears open and know what's going on in the buildings at all times. So, but they definitely aid in the solving of mysteries that occur in our high school, at all of our schools. So this is just background. We are adding to this, this week, or he has, he has the cameras to replace the two that are broken this week, and they had just finished an audit of all of the cameras to be able to get to that place, and he has money in his budget for adding cameras as well. So, you know, that's an ongoing part of this scheduled maintenance and capital maintenance.
Questions from Mike?
Since these went in in like 2007, 2009, what does the network look like?
So right now, it's a blended network. It has both analog and IP. So as we're moving away from the analog, it's going to phase out the analog and hopefully just have IP.
But you can't just change them out with the wiring?
Nope. That has to be, well, that has to be done along with them.
So again, do we have a?
I guess, have we ever had like a professional service come in and actually, like, analyze?
I don't know. It was designed originally by-
It was designed, the company, the system, the system that we purchased was the one that made the proposal and put the system together for us originally.
So, but that was in 2007, right? That we had that?
Well, there were problems, yes. But we're still with the same company, even the upgraded cameras are still the same company.
Because, I mean, the only thing that, like, that I would disagree with is, is the statement that these aren't, you know, and they're not high-tech megapixel cameras, I get that, but is we don't need the image quality. Well, we've already had, like, an act of vandalism that we couldn't identify because we couldn't access the image quality. So I would disagree with that statement that we don't necessarily need the, the good image quality, because if things like that happen, it, they need to be, they need to be addressed, and whoever's doing that needs to be identified and properly centered or punished or whatnot. But the bottom line is, you know, I can't see where not having, like, something that's, that's of discernible quality, you know, for capturing a crime.
Yeah, I just don't know if that particular camera, if that was one of our analog cameras that-
The particular incident, you talk about it, but I believe I know what you're talking about. The image quality was fine. There was other issues that caused identification issues. But certainly, some cameras, that was one of the new cameras. The new cameras are like watching a TV set. Some of the older cameras, you know, are less, less clear, but they're still relatively clear, depending on the distance. I'm not exactly sure here if he's talking about the difference between the two types of cameras we have now or not. But the cameras we have now have, the new ones have pretty good image quality.
Okay. And so when you said that this is another issue, that it wasn't the quality of the image, but has that been addressed, that image, that issue, so that that doesn't happen again, or?
I just don't wanna say publicly what the issue is, but the issue was visible in the picture.
Yeah.
The issue was visible in the picture.
Because, I mean, the, the whole reason I'm asking this question is that this came up and the chief was saying something different. He was saying that.
The chief is here, so we can always ask him.
The chief is here, hi.
I'm not following it, though, I'm trying to.
Don't, you're not alone.
It's tough sometimes.
So, with the image quality that we're talking about in this particular thing, so I'm just, I'm just going back on what we're, what we're saying in here, that it's really not important. And I guess Mr. King was just saying, if you haven't followed, Mr. King was saying that this was not an image issue, it was something else that was occurring in the issue. But I was led to believe that you were saying this was an image issue with the camera itself and not something that was in the picture.
I have no idea on, on the point you're making.
So, my question is, is there an, was there an image issue with this and, and the camera's not working well, or is this something that's?
The question that was posed to me is, can an image be enhanced?
Yes.
And I answered, yes, it can.
Yes.
And can, in fact, we have identified a lab, for lack of a better term, that we can have some image enhancement done on the, with the incident that you're referring to. And I am personally highly confident, um, that with that enhancement, we have very good chance of identifying who the perpetrators were.
Well, that's fantastic, and I'm talking about moving forward too, um, if.
Quality, of course, is going to be, the better you can get of a picture quality, the better chance you have of identifying somebody. If you, if you watch all these convenience stores that, that have incidents, you can tell which ones have good quality cameras and which ones don't.
Yeah.
You know, ten feet away, you can identify somebody compared to, um, what I've heard from store is some of the bigger places, you know, this is public, I really don't want to comment on something like that.
Right, right.
That the quality may not be as good, so that they don't have to identify.
Right.
It might be too far away and they've got a camera twenty, thirty yards away.
Right.
That is just going to take a big picture instead of a little picture that's going to help identify. If they identify them, then they've got to get their, um, their restitution back.
Okay.
Other than insurance, so there, there could be some other reasons, but, you know, we have a school and you, there's no reason not to have good quality cameras as, as many locations as you can to help everybody, to help, you know, Mike would solve things, help teachers, principals, and the police, help when we have to go up there.
I don't know what I was saying, since I caused confusion here, because, I mean, I don't disagree with that at all. I mean, I think, obviously, the better we have. All I'm saying was, was response to what Michael had asked. If the particular incident we're talking about, we're talking a little bit vaguely here, if we're talking about the same incident, okay? There was a, at least a couple images from that incident on our highest quality resolution camera, okay? Where people could be seen quite clearly, I don't know if clearly, completely, but certainly quite clearly. The problem was, they had faces recovered. So, therefore, that's why it could be easily identified. Now, there's other enhancements, facial recognition, stuff like that, that they can do, I don't know. But that's, it was a problem, the problem wasn't a clear view. In this particular case, at least in, at least in one of the cameras.
So, I'm not harping on this particular incident, I'm talking about the, the, well, I, I mean, what's, what's in the statement here and then what, what you're saying is, is, is different, is that we, we don't really need the high-quality cameras, but we did have high quality. And I'm just, I guess where I'm going with all this thing is, do you think maybe we need to get a revisiting of an expert to kind of take a quick peek through the school and determine if we have any gaps and make sure that everything's right and that we're not overcompensating in one area, overspending and underspending in another area and that we don't put our liability as the school in jeopardy and blah, 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 blah?
We, we can definitely do that, I just want to point out where it says that, I, what he's, we have two sets of cameras now, okay? The older ones and the newer ones. The newer ones, to the layman, are pretty high quality, okay? They look to me pretty good, okay? What he's talking about here is he's saying, even our new ones, which are pretty high quality, aren't the highest quality. So, when he says, these are not high megapixel cameras, he, and he said in the sentence before, they're intermediate to high intermediate quality. So, that's pretty good quality, so I wouldn't want to leave someone that believe that the quality is like that fuzzy quality that the chief talked about that you see from the seven eleven when it gets held up as a little TV, you know what I mean? These are pretty, like he says, they're really pretty good quality pictures. Now, again, if they feel we need higher, I don't know, but the cost is, if you can't see your cameras, you get the more cost. So, I think if we were going to entertain the idea of, you know, having a lot more, you know, I don't want to suggest our cameras are quality, higher quality pictures. I think what you suggested would be the place we'd want to start, let's have, let's have somebody look at it.
I'm not even, I'm not even suggesting that for, like, spending tens of thousands of dollars on it. But if we can identify through having an expert security company and take a look at the thing quickly, assuming that it's not some crazy price to get them into this, they can identify potential gaps and maybe we can have a wish list for growing things out in the future and we can have a direction and a plan for continuing with the security of, of the school. You know what I mean?
Versus waiting until.
Of course, waiting until something happens, reactionary, let's be proactive, I guess is what I'm saying. And then maybe if we get, because I'm not an expert, I'm just asking questions, but I, I don't know what I'm asking, you know what I mean? It's just, I'm reading this and I'm just trying to make sense of it.
And this agrees with quality, as Bill points out in the memo, and I agree, so.
Okay.
So, so where are we on the cameras?
Well, I think we'll talk, I mean, I would suggest we talk to Bill.
Yeah.
And see what, if you get somebody to come in and look at them and give us an evaluation of the current system and, you know, and point out what our long-term plan could be to upgrade that system.
And how quickly do you think you can get that?
I would assume soon.
Oh, soon.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I mean, it depends, people's availability, you know what I mean?
Right.
But I think, I would think within a couple of weeks, someone could be in to look at it.
Okay, so when we talked on Wednesday, I think we heard cameras, radios, and laptop.
Right, so, I'll do the easy one, the laptop is, is either there, um, it's been, it's been ordered.
We have the laptops, just in there.
Been ordered to be put to its office or wherever you.
Great, so the SRO will have his own laptop, so he can monitor the cameras.
Right. The camera, the, um, issue of the radios is, is more expensive. We did have an expert come in, I think, uh, and is working with Bill now, I know they met last Friday.
Over the phone.
Over the phone.
I met with Bill.
Right, I met with Bill.
The radio, it's better with the phone.
Better with the phone. So, uh, he's putting together a proposal, uh, it's, it's definitely, uh, more involved than I would, understanding from our meeting on Wednesday. But, and I think we would need some support from, uh, the, the police department relative to grants, because the estimate, off the cuff estimate was sixty to eighty thousand dollars for this repeater system, uh, that, that they would need. And, um, in my understanding, is that would only work for the high school?
Just that building.
Just that building.
Like, the buildings in Boston, uh, new buildings have it built in in their architecture. And it's made into, it's a bylaw.
It's a, yeah.
You're now doing a pre-existing building, it's going to cost a little bit more to rewire.
So, that's interesting, there's, so there's a, in order to build a new building, it has to include that technology?
In Boston, yes, every building.
Well, that kind of makes sense, I think we're as good as Boston, I don't know.
It just, it costs twice as much now because you're doing a pre-existing compared to.
Is there a cheaper alternative, or, um, I mean, that's if you're building a repeaters, but is there another technology that would fulfill the same?
From talking to the radio sales guy, this, he knew exactly what our problem was. And we've got to get it out of the building and the signal's got to get into the building.
Okay.
So, it's nothing, I can't put a repeater outside the building, it's not going to make any difference.
Right, that's right.
It's got to be pushing it out.
All right, thanks.
We're definitely going to need a repeater in, in the building, I'm going to repeat the concerns I expressed last Wednesday. I'm concerned for the safety of the officer, whoever the SRO is, because we've got dead spots in there where the officer cannot communicate directly to the, to the public safety building. I suggest that the school look at the current legislation that's out there for school security and check and make sure that the school's fully in compliance. And, um, and we, we, we need that repeater in there. Having to send a relay call to the front office in order for the front office to call the, call the police station takes time. And when you've got an emergency situation, time is not our ally. So, we have to have, for the, we need the officer to be secure and safe, so they in turn can protect the students and the staff. And right now, we've got, we've got those dead spots down there and, and we're exposed, the officer is exposed.
So, uh, the, the, it's, no doubt that the radios have the dead spots. The, the workaround, if you will, is through the existing radio system within, within the building. So, as long as he has that on him, which I believe he carries all the time, uh, there's always a way for someone to relay the message. So, if, you know, if you want to think of it, it's the, um, so the repeater system for the radio message is the repeater system for somebody to call and then we'll come to the main office. So, all, all of the administrators have a radio, um, the SRO has a radio. And it's, it's been what, it has been what's been in place for, even before we had the SRO, all of, all of our communications or anything that happens within any place away from the phone.
So, right now, we have a temp, we have a stopgap measure, right? Stopgap, because the way it's working now.
Right.
So, in the meantime, we can still continue with the, you know, looking into the more permanent solution.
Right.
There is a laptop, thank you for taking care of that, so the SRO does have a laptop. And George and Neil, since you're technology with Lynn, maybe you guys can follow up with George on, on having someone come in and doing a quick evaluation as long as, you know, find out if there's some cost associated with it, but, I mean, the cameras don't, if you don't, if they're not working, if they're not doing what you need them to do, then why have them? So, um.
I'm confident we can get an evaluation relative to.
Yeah, um, and I can't imagine that it would be a pricey.
I'm sure the company you set up would be.
Right, come in and give you an analysis, right.
I'd want a different company.
What's that?
I'd want a different company than the one that I set up.
Well, I mean, just as an initial, initially.
Miss, we have, did you have?
I have a question for Michael.
One second, go ahead.
So, this, this, what you're calling a stopgap situation, does that comply with what the law is right now as far as what we need at the high school?
I would have to look at the law specifically, my understanding is the current code for first responders is for new buildings. It doesn't apply to older buildings.
So, a grandfather?
It's opposed nine eleven, I believe, it came from the nine eleven issues, right, where they're not being able to use the buildings.
I would have to research.
Inside, well, trades on it, right? And that's where a lot of states adopted to the building code, as I understand it, for buildings of a specific size and architecture.
Correct.
Very far, yeah. So, if we were to build a new high school, I'm just, I'm not suggesting a lot. If we were just to build a new building of any sort, you know, of a certain meaning to code, you'd have to have it.
That, doesn't that tell you something? If you're going to build a new building, it has to be in there, or you don't get to build your new building. And we're talking about, do we want to do this, do we not want to do? I think we've got to get the information quickly and take a look at.
I don't think it's at center of school.
Huh?
I don't think that's at center of school. So, I'm also sure that that's, right.
I, well, then, you know what, you take that one.
That's fine.
You take that one and look into it, because I know you'll figure it out.
They may not have the same radio problems.
I was just saying, we, we have, we have the police radios in all the other schools.
Yeah, I know, but to say it like it's taken, every school has to have one and then we don't have one.
Several issues. We, we have police radios, you have them in Hail. They have them in Center, um, they have them in Mayor Rollins and Elizabeth Burbank, we have not had the same kind of issues. There's definitely more expanse, though, at the high school, to be fair.
And at that hill too, between the, between at least the hill, the woods, you've got woods between there, so.
You got the, the concrete bunker.
So, we just have to get it, look, so Lynn, you're going to take, are you getting these on the minutes? Thank you, for what everybody's going to do, and we had a question.
Yeah, I did, um, to, I'm not sure if it's a question or not, but to follow up on Michael's comment about the grants, police department will be happy to forward whatever information it has of the, find grant sources to Dr. Graham or the superintendent's office or wherever is appropriate. Chief Alfonso, before he left, had indicated to me that he'd actually done that before, but I'll be happy, we'll be happy to send whatever we've gotten into, whoever the appropriate person is.
So, where should that information be sent?
I'd send it to Bill, because Bill would be more than anything of a purchase, yeah.
Clary?
Can you do that?
And I'll probably see, see Michael and George on it.
Does Perry need to be on that?
It's available.
Yes. Yeah, maybe send it to Perry as well, just because it's his building, he should know what's going on.
All right, so, basically, Bill, Dr. Graham, George, and Michael?
Yes, please. And then, and then they'll figure it out and get back to us, thank you. So, we got information coming from everywhere, Lynn's captured it in the minutes, that's good, because when we, uh, we leave, I'm going to need to review that. Okay, so we have next steps on each of the pieces, again, thank you for jumping on the laptop and jumping on the, um, cameras.
Trying to get some information from Bill, but.
Unless, oh, no, that's fine.
He was available.
Yeah.
He is available, but I just wanted to ask you one.
Okay. Does anybody have any, um, more questions on this issue? No? Well, we are actually, um, that's all we have on the agenda for tonight, it was a quick one. Our next meeting is on December second here. For those of you who want to go to the personnel subcommittee, they, it is next Monday at five thirty in this room. The next policy subcommittee is.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, in this room at nine.
Yes.
And finance committee meetings are always an hour.
Oh, you have minutes?
Five fifteen, and, on the nights before regular school committee meetings in this room. What?
Nothing, that's.
Okay. Michael's.
Sorry.
Um, I think that's it, unless anybody has anything else, thank you all for coming.
Can I ask one question? I just, you had said that the minutes of those executive sessions would be released as soon as the reason for the sessions was completed, so, would they be released shortly?
So, so, can you, can you tell us who you are?
Oh, sorry, Mary Lee York.
Mary Lee York. So, um, we haven't finalized it yet, believe it or not, but we will. And, um, at that point, then we will turn it over to the attorney and, um, we'll be referring all of our requests to our, to our attorney.
Okay.
All right?
Timeline, Monday?
I, I can't give you a timeline on it, but if you have a formal request, you can send it in and send it into the superintendent's office. And then, um, we'll forward that to the attorney's office. Okay? All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
And a second.
Sure.
Neil, all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.